Okay, they're being, uh, Wednesday, nineteenth of July at six thirty. We'll start off the zoning board of appeals meeting with-
Seventeen, nineteen.
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 Oh, eighteen?
I'm looking over here.
With the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty Eight, Section Twenty F, this meeting is being recorded. First petition is one thirty-one Petty Lane, petition of Carmen Legato and Amy Grutzner.
Very good.
Ah, lucky, just feel lucky. For a finding that the demolition of the existing nonconforming structure to the foundation and new construction of a single-family dwelling in compliance with setback requirements having not substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood is mandated by zoning by law, Article Five, Section Five Two Three. Subject property is located at one thirty-one Petty Lane, Westport, Mass., and is shown on assessors map seventy-three lots twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. The voting members for this will be Barbara Pontolillo, myself Roger Bernard, Konstanski, Ray Elias, and Cynthia Kozekwitz.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd just like to announce that I will not be sitting on this hearing tonight. I'm sort of a double about it to the applicant, and so I'm just gonna be watching.
Okay, so you're accusing yourself.
And then I'm accusing myself, and I'll be back after this hearing.
Okay, since this is a finding, it requires a simple majority of three out of the five in order to approve. The way that they run the hearing is I'll have the petitioner or the petition's representative come up, provide whatever information is they want to provide. The board will ask questions. After the board has asked questions, it'll open it up to the public, although there's nobody else here. And after we've gotten all the information, we will then close the hearing and render a decision. This was prompted by a letter from Ralph Souza, the zoning enforcement officer, who wrote on July seventeenth, "After review of the proposed building plans to add and alter an existing single-family dwelling at one thirty-one Petty Lane, as per the Westport zoning bylaws, Article Five Two Three, alteration pre-existing nonconforming structures or uses may be altered providing as a finding by the Board of Appeals that such alterations shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood." Now, I also want to make it clear that according to town council, the term detrimental to the neighborhood is applicable to things like safety, traffic, items such as that. It does not encompass architectural issues. So, having said that now, the floor is yours. Just name and address when you speak and provide, like I said, whatever information you think is imperative.
Thank you, Chairman. Pleased the members of the board appreciate the opportunity to make this presentation.
Name and address.
My car- my name is Carmen Legato. My address here is one thirty-one Petty Lane. My current mailing address is six zero zero five Manor Oak Way, Bethesda, Maryland, two oh eight one four. Our plan is we're putting our house up for sale this month in Maryland and to move here permanently. We've enjoyed vacationing here for a number of years, love the community, and we're just really looking forward to the opportunity to, you know, establish ourselves here as a year-round permanent residence.
You vacationed in that shack?
No. Well, we did last year.
Last year.
We did.
Yeah, exactly. Well, that's what I wanted to start with, because I think, you know, a picture may be worth a thousand words here. If you could, I have a set, but if you wanna-
You can give those if you like.
Why don't I just pass these around first? These are the- the first three are our humble abode, which is at one thirty-one Petty Lane. And it was, as you can see, it was constructed in like nineteen thirties, and so obviously it predated zoning codes. And it is a very humble cottage. None of the existing three bedrooms comply with the requirements of the modern code.
There's three bedrooms in there?
Yes.
Amazing how it includes that.
Wow.
None meet the square foot requirements, and none have a single wall that is seven feet.
Okay.
So, it has one-
And one of them has mop beds.
Has one bathroom and a failed cesspool. So, it has no insulation and no drywall, so it is a kind of a fire trap. And it is also hot in the summer, because there's no insulation in the ceiling, so the sun just radiates down on the roof. So, obviously, in order to make it a year-round residence that is, you know, consistent with modern standards and modern building codes, we need to basically take it to the foundation and create new, you know, two-by-six studs with all of the insulation, both in the cavity and outside, et cetera, et cetera. On June thirtieth or thereabouts, I sent a set of plans that included the end, two pictures that I'd like to show you.
Is this the latest set?
It's the latest set, yes.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to start with that, sort of the contrast between now and what we propose to do.
Yeah, a little different.
So, the first one is from the south, southeast, which is one of the-
The south.
Which is one of the- it's shown on here. This is what it looks like now, same place. Now, we would build on that same foundation. We plan to excavate in order to put a two-car garage, just almost at the level of the existing slab. We have to come up just a foot because of-
So, that would be from the west?
It'll be from the south.
The garage?
Garage will be on the south.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
And-
So, this would be looking at it from the southeast?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the next picture is the picture from the southwest.
So, okay.
The west is the side that faces the Westport River, and there's, as you know, there's one-
And the partial road that's there.
The partial road that's there, correct. So, and other than that, let me, I mean, I can, I have up here the GIS map that shows the neighborhood, and this, that's at one thirty-one right there. So, this would be one thirty-three, and that, Brian Tomlinson, they issued a letter of support.
Yeah, we'll be back shortly.
And then, in terms of the lower way, which is called, they're all called Petty Lane, officially, but then they have these unofficial names, Upper Way, Middle Way, and Lower Way, to help distinguish, I guess. So, basically, only these three houses here share the usage of this section here. But in any event, we, the existing structure here is not consistent with a twenty-five-foot setback from Lower Way. It is about forty-two feet from the edge of the pavement, but it is now nineteen feet on this corner and seventeen-plus feet on this corner, but we are not creating any greater issue with regard to the setback. That's the only area that it doesn't comply, and we're not changing that. In fact, we're removing a bulkhead that's not shown here that extends three, four feet beyond that, that's the entrance to the cottage, I mean, to the basement level.
So, your front entrance will be from the west, uh, east, I mean?
It'll be from the east.
Yeah, okay.
Right. So, the, basically, what we have is about, we have a hundred and twenty-five feet of road frontage here on the front. We have a setback in the front that's in excess of forty feet, and we have a setback on this side that's in excess of forty feet. So, the only area where we don't have that full twenty-five-foot setback is right here, and we're not going to change that. Now, once you get past here, then the setback will be six feet, because that's a rear yard. So, that's the setback that applies. And then from the north, the setback will be ten feet, as required. In actuality, I think we'll have like sixteen or seventeen feet after the addition were constructed, which goes out this way. So, the addition will be out this way and up the hill a little bit, like that, to pretty much as you see it on this depiction. I mean, exactly as you see it. So, the structure as we propose it would be one story over the existing footprint. There will be a basement and a garage, but that will not count as a story, because under the zoning code, if more than fifty percent is six feet or less above, then it is not counted as a story. And that's our situation, where it's like sixty-four percent is six feet or less. So, and Mr. Souza has seen all of the plans, and those are also, that analysis is set forth on what I sent you as Z, like for zoning, zero zero one and zero zero three. And then the height analysis was shown in zeros, excuse me, Z zero zero two. So, the height is only thirty-three feet, and the requirement is to be under forty feet. So, we have two, one story in the front, and then on the addition, we have a second story. But the second story is thirty-three feet, which is well within the forty feet, and we're, we have two stories above grade. So, it's pretty modest in terms of the requirement, what's being proposed. We, for example, as a corner lot, the occupancy is entitled to be sixty-five percent. However, we, our occupancy, after constructing the addition and so forth, would be eighteen point four percent. So, it's a very small footprint even after the addition. In terms of overall size, it's about the average of new houses in the United States. It's about twenty-five hundred square feet. And it has two true bedrooms, and the third one we're counting is a sleeper sofa in the recreation room in the basement. So-
So, what's the septic system rated for?
Three.
Three, okay.
Yeah.
You're putting in all-new septic system?
Oh, yeah, it's an Advantex.
Yes, I saw like the well was up front or-
Correct.
That's staying, I assume.
Yes, and it's a denitrification system. The effluent from the system is clear liquid, and then it would be pumped up, and the leaching field would be at the top of the hill. It is a very steeply sloped lot.
Yes.
In terms of the other issues, I guess, we are, right now, there's a tangle of, you know, invasive vines of various kinds all around the perimeter, and they kind of encroach in, and they grow up over the trees, and we've been battling those. Actually, Amy has, she's got the scars here.
Yeah.
We're all battling them.
Yeah.
So-
Those vines get to be, jeez.
Yeah, very difficult.
What has been cooperating with them too?
Well, one got into my shed, and it's actually curled around some of my fishing rods.
Now, you can't fish them, yeah.
Clearly, I haven't got fishing rods. Right.
So, we have proposed to remove the invasives on the perimeter of the property and to install native plants.
Removing them forever is really hard.
I, yes, it's a constant upkeep, right. So, we are actually within the hundred-foot vegetated border, the wetland. The wetland is out here, it's not shown on this version. It's on a neighboring property. And last evening, we had a hearing before the Conservation Commission. They issued an RDA, request for declination, and of applicability, and they approved this plan that we have for re-landscaping these areas, and of course, all our protective features during construction to ensure there's no sedimentation and so forth. So, as I said, this is steeply sloped here, so we're going to take a number of measures, putting boulders in, as you're, you know, a lot of vegetation to prevent any sheet effect of water flowing down the hill. We also will have four cisterns that are a thousand gallons each to catch rainwater, and that will be to conserve the aquifer to use for irrigation for all these plantings that we're putting in. And then, we also will have an overflow to a underground recharge system. So, all of the roof runoff will have two recharge areas.
So, I'm not gonna run down if you need it.
So, so, I think it's up here. So, there's a recharge area right in here, this rectangle, and that will have the overflow from the cistern, whatever the cisterns can't catch with four thousand gallons from the roof runoff, it will go underground and it will recharge the aquifer. Same here, this one is before the downspouts on this side, and for, of course, we're gonna need drainage all around the perimeter of the house, given the sloped lot. So, and then we're gonna have two, there's, right, what happened here? There we go. Right there and here are the wells for ground source heat pump. So, basically, all of the heating and air conditioning will come from the, from the exchange-
From the heat pump.
The heat pump, yeah.
Now, how deep are you gonna have to drill to do that?
I think it's five hundred and sixty feet.
That's what I thought.
It's a closed loop system.
Yes.
Yeah. So, but we-
It's up in the hills, so.
So, we hope to be actually have a zero net energy when we finish.
How did, tell me how the cisterns work. Are they underground?
No, they will be above ground, but they will be hidden from view. If you look at this-
I'm just curious, because it's such a good idea.
Basically, behind the garage, but on the same level as the basement, there will be, there will be behind there, but there will be a, you know, sort of a cedar fence-
Uh-huh.
-which will hide them from view. But, yeah, they will be interconnected, and then you have a pump, which then you can just have a garden hose attached to it.
Really smart.
Above grade.
Yes, it's above grade, yeah. And it has pre-filters and so forth, but it's not potable water, it's for irrigation, but it's remarkably clean. I mean, I've done this before, and it's really a great system.
Could you come help me out?
Got some cards. You didn't tell Carmen's done the work on this.
So, anyway, I think that-
This summer, we haven't needed it, but we typically, it's been wet here.
Oh, this summer?
Yeah, last summer was the opposite.
Last summer was the opposite.
Last few summer.
Like every other year. Did you go to this one?
It's all because I didn't do any landscaping this year, that's why it's wet.
All the green that's on the left side there, is that like a deck or something?
The, yes, I think, let me, let me see if I can get the right copy. Are you looking at this?
What page of this one?
The new one, okay, sure. So, yes, the outlining green is the deck.
It's the deck.
Correct.
The whole area is-
Yeah, and that, and the setback to the deck is seven feet four and a half inches to the property line, as shown there. And then sixteen feet seven inches to the north property line. Are there any questions?
Is that this deck?
Correct.
Oh, okay. This one? It looks bigger, I think, on the plans than it does on the-
Yeah, I mean, it's a scale drawing, it's very precise, but it's just the perspective, I think.
Yeah.
If you kind of look in here, and you sort of count the shingles about how big they are, you're gonna get a better idea of how deep that is.
I mean, I think, I think the deck is about thirty by seventeen, sixteen.
Oh, thirty.
Yeah, well, it says thirty-one, thirty-one, three, just across the back of it, so.
Yes, thirty-one, three, seventeen, yeah.
I mean, it looks, it looks really big on here, but it doesn't seem all that big on the-
Yeah, it's a matter of perspective, I guess.
Yes, all right. But I mean, I think it won't look out of balance, or it'll look in balance with the structure.
Bedroom go upstairs?
Just one bedroom upstairs.
And one is gonna have a really good view of the-
That's the, yes, that would be what they call, hopefully, the owner's suite.
Yes.
Be up there.
Versus guest suite.
And the guest suite is over the existing garage.
They can look the other way.
The garage, but it's actually not bad either.
Or the lower level.
Yeah. I mean, our views are gonna be, we, around houses, because there are two houses in front of us.
There's two houses.
So, we have, it's-
But it falls off there, so you should be looking out over, sort of.
Sort of, yeah, but there's space between the houses.
Oh.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Peek through it, you know?
Right.
It's probably-
It's more than a peek. It's not bad, I mean-
This is the view.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
So, we see our-
But you're gonna be up higher, so, eh, yeah, all right.
Couple of, we're only-
Still have that monstrosity of the-
It's only gonna be about four feet higher.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That too.
The main level would only be about four feet high.
But you're gonna be on the second floor for that bed-
Oh, for that bedroom will be much higher, yes, yes.
Right, yeah.
Who should we think, having the balcony? We were just dropping that. When you're going through these things, some things end up on the cutting room floor, you know, because of expense or complications or whatever. We're not gonna make it any bigger, it's just, you know, things that we might cut.
Well, one of the-
Why?
Why would we cut them?
The balcony.
Well, the, why, why cut it? One reason is, what I had drawn originally was a cantilever, and, which would work technically, but it's just asking for trouble, because it's very, very hard to seal them, and so especially, you know, if you've got wind-
Especially from the west wind from coming off the river.
Yes, so I think it's more prudent not to do that. Then we talked about having a small sort of balcony that would be self-supporting with brackets and so forth, like a Juliet-type balcony, and then you decided that if it's too small to put any furniture on it, a chair, then, you know, it's really not worth it.
Well, one of the things that we would generally do in this kind of hearing is, if we were to approve, we approve it based on the drawing supply.
Right.
So, I don't really care where you put your furniture on the inside.
Right.
It's the stuff on the outside.
Right.
You know, that if you made any significant changes to, you know-
Well, the, let me, the only two changes that we, I mean, the, this outline will not change the footprint. And in fact, let me see if I've got this. The only difference would be this, if you go to the most recent set, and you look at A O O two, second page, you'll see that on the west side, there are a series of diagonal lines that go near the western side. Do you see those?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, those diagonal lines reprise exactly the wall below.
Oh, okay.
And so-
So, that's a hidden, okay.
So, as you saw from, from the sketch, the three D, there was an overhang there, and so by eliminating that overhang, we're just going straight up. So, we're cutting off some square footage up there. So, it will only push the house back a little bit on the second level.
Oh, okay.
Just a little bit smaller. So, I just wanted to make that clear. And then the other thing that we have-
But you're not changing the footprint.
We are not changing the footprint at all.
Okay.
But the second level would just come in a little bit. The, the other thing that's under consideration is there's a cupola drawn on the first store.
Yeah.
And the, the wind design speed of the cupola that I had found was a hundred and twenty miles per hour, and our design wind speed is a hundred and thirty-nine miles per hour. So, unless I find one that would be a hundred and thirty, you know, rated for at least a hundred and thirty-nine miles per hour, we might wanna, we'll have, we might have to drop that.
Oh, yeah, that's an architectural issue.
Right, right.
Well, I may read a letter from Brian and Patricia Tomlinson of one thirty-three Petty Lane. "We live on Lower Lane at one thirty-three Petty Lane directly below Carmen Legato and Amy Grutzner's house at one thirty-one Petty Lane. We are writing to support their application to remodel and add to their home at one thirty-one Petty Lane. We have seen their plans, and we believe that their house remodel and addition, as it is proposed, would be a vast improvement, increase in the value of that property, and complementing the more updated and two-story homes in petty heights, including ours. We understand that the zoning board of appeals must make a finding that the plans as approved would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Carmen and Amy's remodeled and expanded house easily meets that standard. In fact, their proposed plans, which is where they're in the wingman-style house similar to ours, would be a vast improvement that will blend harmoniously with the neighborhood. We would appreciate your bringing in comments in support of Amy and Carmen's application to the attention of zoning board of appeals." So, that's, takes care of the paperwork. They live right like-
Right, they're closest to the bottom, and they look directly up at-
Okay.
The structure that we're building. They're fully aware.
Yeah, I, I mean, I took a drive-by, and I saw the shack, and all the other houses, because, you know, when you're doing something like this, it's, it's good to get a feel for the neighborhood.
Right.
What houses are already there, you know, how does it mesh with everything? How's it affect traffic? How does it affect the safety of the neighborhood?
Right.
So, you know, it's important to, you know, at least get a scan of what the neighborhood looks like.
Let me, let me just comment on zoning and parking. We are, you know, creating a two-car garage, and we have, as you see, a driveway, and so there's additional space, and we also have proposed, what you see on the version that had been sent to you previously, the blow-up, it's easier to see, a true grid, grass parking area for any guests. So, we have plenty of off-street parking, and there wouldn't be any parking here. It's not really feasible, but we, we don't have any need to, or wouldn't, so. Let me just pass out some of these. Take a look. Photos of the neighborhood.
Oh, look at the neighborhood, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so like in a lot of neighborhoods, mixture between newly renovated large houses and still some cottages.
Soon to be renovated.
Soon, soon to be renovated.
Right. Well, I mean, I think it almost is the nature of all housing stock. It becomes functionally obsolescent, and, and then, you know, it becomes impossible to-
Well, especially in communities that, that were originally summer, you know-
Right.
Mostly summer cottages.
Right.
We deal a lot in Westport, we have a lot of areas that are like that, that were, for a long time, just summer, so, you know, they are small cottages with very few amenities.
Right.
And now people are using them for, you know, for full-time residents.
So, we're going to be in one of those for the winter.
When do you think you would, you would start actually working on this?
We hope to have a building permit. Uh, we hope to have a building permit, uh, October first, uh, and very ground, October first.
Yeah.
Um, we, we occupy our winter rental, um, it, which is just on the lower way, uh, down the other's direction, uh, way from our side, um, from October fifteenth to May fifteenth, and, you know, to move in May fifteenth.
Uh huh, October, November, December, January. Yeah, it's, depending on what the weather's like, yes. As long as you can get it.
That's why we really want to get started.
That's why. That's why.
It's, it's getting better, yeah, yeah, it's getting better. Some things you have to preorder, like windows and doors.
Oh, yes. Right, yes.
Hopefully, we can make it, uh, so.
I started in December and finished in November, a similar project, yeah, so, good luck.
Yeah, we'll need, we'll need a lot of luck, I know. Any other questions?
Any questions from the board?
No.
Any comments from the audience?
Jerry Catino, I live at one ten C Petty Lane, I also own one ten B Petty Lane, and, uh, as a, and a butterer, I would like to strongly support this application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, any other comments?
No.
Not entertain a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Cynthia?
Aye, oh, I forgot.
You're voting.
I'm filling in for Jerry, I don't know, I'm going to choose an old one.
It's anonymous, uh, so at this point, we will just deliver it and.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks for your consideration.
Obviously, this is going to be a very, a vast improvement to the neighborhood, and I don't know if anybody else go by, you know, but it's, you know, it's a typical cottage. And now they're making it into a full-time house.
Once they close the meeting, we just won't be speaking to you or asking anymore, we talk amongst ourselves, but you certainly can listen.
Oh, yeah, you say.
Oh, of course, oh, no, yes, yeah. No, it's open to the public, we're recording, so.
I think it's pretty straightforward, uh, I don't have any problems with the project at all.
No?
No, I totally agree.
Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion then.
I don't have, I don't have the cover sheet.
Is that?
I don't have the cover sheet.
I don't have a cover sheet either, so I can't do our little cheat sheet meeting thing.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
That's good.
I make a motion to grant the petition of Carmen Legato and Amy Grootzner for a finding that the demolition of the existing non-conforming structure in the foundation, to, such structure to the foundation, and new construction of a single-family dwelling in compliance with setback requirements shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood as mandated by zoning by law five, section five-two-three. Subject property is located at one thirty-one Petty Lane, Westport, Mass., and is shown on the mass, on the Sessors map, seventy-three lots, twenty-twenty-one and twenty-two, with, with the conditions that it is to be done by the, by the latest drawings as supplied, is this dated?
There is some.
Because you had, we, we had a couple of versions of these.
Yeah.
I have the latest ones.
You have the latest, okay, the latest drawings. I make a motion.
I second the motion.
Second the motion, any, any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Though the petition is, is granted, there is a twenty-day appeal period, so don't start breaking ground for twenty days. Other than that, good luck, I hope it all turns out for you, it looks like it's going to be, you know, it's, it's certainly a, a nice neighborhood, and I know Jerry lives there.
Besides.
Oh, besides the fact that Jerry lives there. But it's, you know, you're going to have an overview of the, of the river, I mean, it's, uh, yeah, and, and you're doing a lot of things sort of above and beyond the call of duty, as far as the nitro, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that I think are, the water control, you know, that you were talking about runoff, you know, all that stuff is, 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 is nice to see that people are, you know, are thinking about that, because it, it does make a big difference, and it'll, and it will help the neighborhood, so, congratulations, and.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck to you.
Thanks very much.
Cynthia, you need to tell us about contractors. Do you have a contractor yet? Local contractor.
Well, I have a very good G C.
Oh.
But some local contractors.
Local guy.
And you want to start in October.
Everybody I know is booking into, like, so anyway, so.
And you want to start in October.
Well, thank you very much, and.
But then, um, if we retire, then you can call Dennis Talbot, he's in Little Compton, and he'd probably hook you up with some subs, because you really can sub, you can be G C, yeah.
Yeah.
Talbot?
Yeah.
Luis Talbot can draw, uh, but he, he's in Chatter, this is so.
I thought I was the only one that didn't get a motion.
Yeah, I know, I kept looking, and I was like.
I said, how am I going to make a motion when I was, well, proper information, yeah.
We had a mail last week, right?
I was sure that I lost it someplace, and I was like, oh my god, whatever.
People in the town, they're telling the cabinet the conditions behind it.
Oh, Roger.
And they've got, but they consider the existing contract, so.
Well, I can't catch my existing contract, but he might, yeah, yeah, okay.
But he'll, today, he's, you know, he's a G C, and was a G C, but not, but the last, probably five years, all the, all of he's been doing is subbing out.
Subbing out.
And doing contracts, and he may be able to give us a look at himself.
Can I give him your name?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you very much.
He owes us big time.
Okay, well, thank you.
Michelle, when he was building his house next to Michelle, when she was married.
Oh, I'll tell you. Thank you.
He, 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 he sent her subject, line and her, so we broke it out, basically forever indebted to us.
Oh, wow.
Okay, administrative items, I'm going to jump ahead just a little bit, um, the, we are putting together a, um, a subcommittee of the planning board, zoning board of appeals, to develop a short-term rental, um, bylaw. We started this, Jerry and I were on the, worked with the planning board, what, three years ago, four years ago?
Yeah, two, two thousand nineteen.
And, and one of the things that we did, we, first of all, we, um, we looked at what other towns were doing, what other bylaws there were, and, and Jeff Lake actually provided some other ones, and from that, we developed a, a rough draft, cutting and pasting from what other towns had done, that made sense for Westport. So we have a draft, um, but what we're, what we want to do now is, we really want, but it was at a time when there were a lot of other bigger issues that we had to tackle, and we didn't want to overburden the town with, with too many zoning changes, so now's the time that we really want to bring this in front of the town, the next year. So what we want to do is, um, we, uh, we want to continue with this, uh, I guess, Jerry and I were on the committee, we need to select two people to continue this, I think Jerry and I would both like to continue this, since we, we did the original draft, unless someone else really has it, you know, you know, really feels strong that they would like to be on this committee. We can only have two, because otherwise it becomes quorum. So, so what we need to do is, we need to take a vote on, on who to have on this subcommittee for short-term rental.
I'll make a motion to have Jerry and Roger be on the committee to, uh, work on short-term rentals with the planning board.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good, thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
We, like I said, we have a draft, hopefully, this will go, nothing ever goes smoothly, but because we have a draft, we're not starting from scratch, and we have inputs from Jeff Lake, we have inputs from a lot of other towns. Some of the, there are still going to be some thorny issues that have to be identified, like, do you have to live on the property? Uh, you know, there, there are three or four aspects of this that I think are going to be the most controversial, that we, that we really need to iron out, and, and we will obviously have to bring, you know, once we, as a subcommittee, develop draft, it will then go to the planning board, and then it will be open to the public, and it will have public comments, and then it will go to the board of, to the select board, and, and then, once they look at it, it will go back to the planning board for final resolution, so that's, that's kind of the process that you have to go through for any article, and we want to get this done for the next, for the next town meeting, which would be next May or so, so.
Could I just add one thing?
Yep.
Uh, when we did it back in two thousand nineteen, uh, we covered quite a number of potential bylaw changes, not just short-term rentals, we had signs, we had all sorts of things, uh, and I don't know what direction the planning board will take this one. So all I wanted to ask is, if you, all I wanted to ask is, if you wanted to consider, if they do stray into other areas, because you just approved us, uh, doing the short-term rental part, uh, is that okay? Can you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, because they might very well, uh, because there may be other things that are pinching, that's what happened before, too, we had a number of things, and.
Are these open here, here?
Yes.
That, that anybody could go.
I would say that, but they're working, so they're, they're not like.
Well, I do remember somebody came from, a woman stood up and talked about.
Short-term rental.
Yeah, yeah, I, I watched that hearing, I did watch that.
Yes, yes, so, you know, but hopefully, the intent on this is we, you know, is we really need to shore up this hole in our, in our bylaws, and we need to make it, we need to do a balance, I believe, between the rights of the neighborhood and the right of an owner to rent out the property, I mean, there has to be some kind of a balance, I mean, some, some communities just don't allow it.
Yeah, but, I mean, Westport has a history.
Westport has a history, though, I mean, there's a lot of people that do this, so, but there's got to be a balance.
Yeah, so, I mean, you, you say, you know, they have to live in it, maybe not live in it per se, but at least, don't rent it for X amount of months, but it's only, it's only rented from six months a year, not full, like, not full, not a, not a rental only, right?
Right, right, those are the kind of things that we need to iron out, and it's something that obviously the town is going to have to approve, and we all know that as a zoning bylaw, it requires two-thirds approval, so, uh, you know, so, so we have to look at both sides of this, from the side of people who want to gain a little extra money renting out their property, and all the neighborhoods, neighborhood who have to, you know, live with it, so we have to be cognizant of, of both the sides of that.
Can you, I know you did a few years ago, are you going to, like, check the, the bylaws of the same, I mean, and do an update? Because people, I mean, there may be changes that occurred?
Yes.
As they know, like, how it.
Right, yes, as I said, Jeff Lake just gave us some, some updated ones that I've looked at, and I've already incorporated it into a draft, and then, hopefully, next week, we'll get together, or we'll, we'll set up a meeting with the, we're going to have two people from the planning board, two from the zoning, and one from health, to, uh, to go through this, and, and to iron out what we want to present to the planning board, and then we'll work with the planning board, at those points, then it'll be public meetings, uh, to iron out whatever details, uh, and, and, and then, from there, then go to the select board, so, anyway, that's, that's the plan, and like I said, you know, the, the goal is to get this done by the next, the next meeting.
Something to address, or more recent thing is, you know, if a property is only bought but for renting,
That's, that's what.
Then I think, then it's, then it's a business, right?
Then it's a business.
And if it's rented six months out of the year, or short-term, maybe the rest of it, long-term, you know, you know, the summer rental rental kind of deal, then that's a little different, but even so, that gets a little.
Mm-hmm, so, those are the kind of things we really, you know, that.
Yeah, we have, you know, I, you know, in front of my house, there's, it used to be the son who owned, the son of the folks who owned it, he lived there, and then he left, um, he moved away, and now they do summer, and they do winter, and the summer rentals are actually okay, some of the winter rentals actually have been a little more odd, you know, so I'm throwing all her, like, oh, I'm, I, I need to finish my chicken dumpling, so I'll just put it out for the animals.
Yeah, no, yes, okay.
So then you get the coyotes and the deer running by.
Okay, uh, moving on to other business, we have two sets of meeting minutes that need to be approved. The first one is, is an amendment to the May seventeenth, where there was a section, one of the decisions wasn't included in the original, and that's been then updated, so we approved the May seventeenth at the last meeting, we now need to approve an update to it to include, uh, the, uh, one of the decisions that was missing, so.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the amended, revised, uh, minutes of, uh.
May seventeen.
May seventeen.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, well, what we need to do with this is, we need to keep both copies on file, because we approved a set of meeting minutes at the last one. It, you know, we can't change history, uh, we approved that, we need to keep that as a, as a first version, and this as the, as a.
Amended version.
An amended, an amended version, so, okay, June twenty-first meeting minutes, um, you know, once again, Maria put everything together, I know I've reviewed it, this is, and one of the, um, one of the things I told her that when we were writing on this is, is I really wanted, and, and I know you've all looked at it, um, not a word for word what all the abutters said, but at least a good synopsis, because I think it's important to document these kind of things, this had to do with the bed and breakfast. So, uh, I mean, there was a lot of good information in there that I, that I didn't want to lose, even though it got to be a little bit long-winded, I, I think it's important to document that, so, so that's all in there, and I, and Maria did a really good job of putting it all together. So I would recommend that we, that we approve the meeting minutes of June twenty-one, uh, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would encourage everybody to perhaps read the reviews of the Airbnb that's property for the next meeting, because there, some things said by the abutters were taken a little bit out of context, if you read what the reviewers were really saying, and it might not just be so one-sided in the question.
So you're talking about reading.
Reading the Airbnb reviews of Fifty Spinnaker Way, because, shall we, I read a few of them, and I, and some of them, and they sort of excerpted some of those reviews, but they were sort of taking it a little bit out of context, and I think there is aggression from both sides, the abutters as well as the subject property. So shall we say the abutters have the meeting?
Okay, um, there was a request for the planning board for comments on the High Ridge Road project, which was this, which I've looked at, and I don't see that we really get involved in it, but, anybody have any issue with?
I looked at it, and I find that we have no, it's not relevant to us.
It's not relevant to our job.
Therefore, I would, uh, move that we not, make no, no comment.
No comment, but do you agree?
Yes.
Yes, okay, uh, our next meeting is the twenty.
Twenty-third of August.
Right, and which case we'll have.
It's going to be a busy night.
Three things.
Three things.
Okay, anything else that, uh, any other business that I haven't discussed, anyone wants to talk about?
Uh-uh, like a gin and tonic.
I'm looking at Cynthia's glass, it looks like a gin and tonic.
I know, that's what we can say.
Is this soda or?
Sure does.
Well, at the last meeting, at the end of last meeting, um, at the end of our last meeting, uh, I suggested that we, uh, ask for a follow-up status of various things that were hanging fire, and, um, one of them was Drift Road.
Yes.
And, um, I don't know if that's what led to this, uh, coming in next time, or if it just happened.
It just.
Advice to heart to try to get it done right.
The attorney came in with the documents just as I was going to send an email.
So, anyway.
Typing up an email, email to wrap.
We did say get an attorney, and he had an attorney, so.
I just would like to remind us that we would like to, we voted to follow up our.
Right, and, and Maria did ask, uh, Jeff Lake about, uh, the weather.
Right, right.
Oh.
And there may be others, too, I don't, I don't recall them, but, okay, so, anyway.
The Sykes project never came back to us.
I have nothing on that, I have not had anything on that for, like, three years.
And we will have to vote for, um.
Officers.
Officers, no, it's not on the agenda, so I don't really think we should do it tonight.
I thought we did that already.
Yeah, I thought we did that already.
We are, yeah.
We have what to do.
We had to do it after July.
I know.
Well, that was much earlier than last July, that we did that.
We can't, this is the first meeting.
I thought it was so bad. That was last year, I think, but we did last year's late.
We did last year's late. What I would propose is that we.
Should we put it on the next agenda?
I don't want to put it on the next agenda, for the, you know, whatever comes after that.
Well, whenever.
And according to our bylaws, the, the current members stay in place until, until. And according to our bylaws, the the current members stay in place until, until the new election. So I'm willing to do this until the next election, which, whatever the, whatever the meeting, you know, we have one in September.
I will have something.
Because I don't want to, I don't want to burden it down with next, next week, next one's going to be long. I, you know, it's going to be.
I am going to be getting something for September, so I'll, as soon as I get it, I will send out an email to get a hold.
Jeff Lake coming for the meeting soon?
Yes. Already on his calendar.
Yes, okay.
Trying to be sort of ahead of the game on that one.
What am I going to do if you're not here?
Yeah.
I don't know.
You have to commit a last minute.
That'll be able to get it.
You should get proxy members.
We're going to be like living here.
Oh, you're not here on August?
No, I, Ju- June.
You're missing the party?
June is my last, I, that will.
We haven't told them to twist along.
Five years, and I am not going to come back after that, and I am hoping that you will consider taking my seat as a permanent member. Your legal background is.
I got to wonder how to, I second that. I moved to close the meeting.
No, no, second.
I didn't really say that. I'm not really moving to close the meeting.
You have to motion to adjourn.
You can start to practice now, so go ahead.
I I moved to close the meeting.
All right.
I second.
Adjourn, yeah.
We have a second, all in favor?
Second.
Aye.